We call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, August 20th, 2018. City Council Room. Our members of the City Council are present. The others include James Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The second item is to approve the minutes of August 6th, 2018. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes?
Just that Mr. Ross's last name probably should be capitalized.
You don't need it capitalized.
As long as you know who it is.
Good eye.
Will I see you on Wednesday?
I'll take care of that.
So a motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is retirement ceremony for Roland Morey. Has Roland come up with anyone else? As you all know, Roland's been a face of the recycling for...
Last 22...
I was gonna say, I say, I knew it was over 20. 22 years he's been at the recycling center. And this is an appreciation of 22 years of service to the city of Newport at the recycling center. 1996 to 2018.
That's fine, I love it.
Got it?
I can't even smile. That's okay.
Congratulations. Good luck.
I should play ball here.
Oh, well, we'll have to see at the football games now.
I wanna be moving.
Thank you for helping me sort all these years.
Good to meet you.
I got a wish too. I want to see other moving and up there somewhere. There's nothing there.
Oh, okay.
My bad. What? That's my small pie.
Congratulations, Roland.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Roland.
The next item, comments by members of the public. And we have Sue Watson.
Sue Watson, Ms. Bruce Streeden in court. Three years ago, Carol Nicholson, then the librarian at Goodrich Memorial, asked King and me to organize a volunteer group called the Friends of the Library. A specific goal was to raise money, to help specifically with the windows at first, but just to raise money and to run the book sale, the annual book sale put on by library. King and I gladly did this, and we had a lot of volunteers, all volunteers. This year, for the library sale, a request was made if we could use the electronic sign across from this stuff to advertise our book sale. We were told that it was not a community event, it was not the library, it was by Friends of the Library, which is a grossness statement. We are all volunteers, and we've all worked hard in the past to raise money. When we did our first book sale in 2016, we raised $1,800 for the library. Last year, we raised just under $2,000. This year, we raised $772. I can't blame it solely on not having the use of the sign, but I put a lot of emphasis on that. We also have not received great, great help from the board of directors of the library, with the exception of Steve Edgely, who was always first in line. And we didn't receive a lot of great help from the library, but this is after Carol retired, because Carol's been wonderful. But I feel we were sorely disappointed that we weren't unable to take advantage of the sign to advertise the book sale that would only help the community, help the library, and help the whole community itself. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what happened and how our book sale went this year.
Thank you. We'll move on. The next item, fire station facility maintenance priority, Fire Chief Jamie DeClaire.
So as you all know, that we had put for two years aside $25,000 to redo the floor at the station because it's cracking and fill holes and stuff. But unfortunately, when we had that windstorm this spring, we lost a bowl of shingles. Some plywood showing. And I think basically that's gonna take priority over the floor. So we did claim out of insurance, they're gonna pay for half. One side, which is the side base of the parapente, it's 20 years old, they're starting to roll, so it needs to be replaced. In my letter, like I explained, I'd like to take some of that money, about $44,000 to have the floor project and put it towards standing seam roof. It's, once it's done, it's done, we don't have to mess with it as long as we're gonna be around. And then we'll pick away at the floor in the next couple of years, like we did these past two years. I think that makes more sense. The standing seam built in that's 50 years plus versus spending $38,000 for shingles and another 10, 15 years replacing it. There's a couple of different estimates. Hopefully, it should be in the packets. If not, I have them. So the difference, like I said, is $44,000, which we take out of the floor funds. So choose color charts.
Did you go out to bid?
Yeah, I went through, I went through, try to stay local, Jack Degree and Bob Carroll. Really quick access. Have to use the local people. So Bob Carroll does standing seam, Jack doesn't, but they're gonna work together. So color chart, open for suggestions. My thought would be the charcoal gray would be the best match. And we'd like to do this, you know, kind of immediately before the winter and the cold and stuff sets in. Yes.
So basically, last year, the council set aside $25,000 for a sinking fund, and we've done the same thing in this year. And because the windstorm happened, that was unforeseen, circumstances unanticipated. And now that we realize the roof is more of an emergency than the floor, what we, if the council approves this move, in this next budget, we would continue with the sinking fund that we set up for the past two years. That would then go to the floor. So if the council approves this, then you can choose the color.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I know Bob Carroll does good work. He's done, he's done for the city. Actually did buy roof from my house.
Did the gateway as well.
Did the gateway. They are guaranteed 50 years, the standing seam roofs, as long as you're not up there putting holes in them. As long as, as long as they told me, as long as I'm not on my roof putting a hole in it, it's guaranteed for 50 years, which is much better than shingles. Because shingles, you're lucky if you get 10 years now out of it.
Yeah. To me, that's the way to go. That's what my recommendation is.
And in reality, it's not a lot that much more than if you went with shingles.
No, because the shingles, shingles is $35,000. Standing seam is $55,000. For $20,000, you're gonna replace the last of your lifetime.
Yeah.
Our lifetime.
Well, I won't be around, but it's...
Never know.
Questions?
What is our criteria for going out to bid?
We've always just put it out there and made phone calls. I've talked with President St. John's Mary.
An argument?
Yes. They never go back to collect the messages. We talked to Jack Degree, Bob Carroll, and Mike Cheney. Mike didn't want to bid on it because he's having his wife's personal issues.
So we don't have a policy on over X number of dollars that has to go out to bid?
We do for grants, and that number is $15,000. Historically, since I've been here, what we do when we have a substantial amount, we reach out to our local people first, like Jamie. It's not exactly what the model of Jamie has done. Not a lot of people specialize in standing seam roofs, from what I understand.
Other questions from anyone?
Was this Carol good before we do the...
The $55,000? $55,360. And that's with the snow guard and everything?
Snow guards or the doors?
Yeah.
I learned that correctly.
And it's spooling over there, so...
Other questions from council members?
Water, water is one of the worst things that you can have a building.
Unless you expose the plywood, you're getting water in the building. You get water, and exposes the plywood to rot.
I'll tell you a quick story about the fire. A gentleman that worked in Washington DC, who was a Washington DC police officer, decided he wanted to move to the kingdom. Him and I had a conversation, and he said one of the first things he saw coming down was the lake, the new fire station, and a modern treatment plant. And that made his decision to come to here. So the building is an asset, and we've gotta keep it up.
All right. Anything else? Then if not, I would entertain a motion, because we would have the motion to approve the request.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of money for the roof repair.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Getting that, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Any special color? You guys will keep with the red charcoal? Don't stay red.
Doesn't have to match the key thing.
Because you were thinking, right now, it's like a charcoal black, so we kinda like to stay with it.
I think mine's that color. The charcoal looks good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is the fuel pre-buy. And we received a memo from the city manager regarding our pre-buy prices. Oh, no, I'm just seeing how much it's up from last year. The total is, the total for, the total pre-buy for fuel oil is $62,616. And for propane, it's $15,950. Or a total of $78,566. And that's up roughly, about $10,000 from last year. Just doing a quick rough. It's up about $10,000, the pre-buy. And I know heating oil has been going up.
It's more in alignment with 2015, 2016 prices right now.
And we've, there's no motion yet, but discussing it right now. And I know overall, it saved the city money to do the pre-buy. I know, let's say, on a five to 10-year average, yeah, you might get up a year where it flips, where you don't, but I think overall, since we started doing the pre-buy, it saved us quite a bit from where we used to buy it every pay year, whatever, every month.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I know the pre-buys for 50 amount, if it goes for some reason lower than that, do we get that rate?
I believe, I believe that's the advantage of the pre-buy. And one of the things that Friends is able to do for us is they're able to give us a price that's a little bit better than the average consumer, because we buy in so much quantity. And we've been doing business with them for a number of years. In 2016, I was asked to bid it out. They ended up being the best price and the most reliable, because they are able to supply such money. They also provide us, if we have an emergency, 24 hours, seven days a week service, if we have something that malfunctions. So I believe that Dennis Percy said that they're gonna be using fuel that they have in store from last year, which is why they're able to give us a better price.
What's on pricing?
$259.99.
For the fuel?
For the fuel, plus a one cent distributor's license fee, whatever that is, something new. And then propane's a $1.45 per gallon. I know when I went out to bid a couple of years ago, you're right, we only had like one other person bid on it, because a lot of people chose not to, because they couldn't match Fred's price. Because Fred, Fred actually delivers the oil for most dealers. He's the supplier. Questions? Oh, he just answered that.
I would verify if you get a refund if it goes down. Because a lot of times when you pre-buy, you're pre-buying what they pre-buy. So the price is pretty well fixed usually.
Becky, are you able to, do you know that by chance, just by happenstance? If the, if the pre-buy, if the rate goes down, we get a lower rate? Do you know?
No, we're not, we're not gonna have that rate.
Okay. So if it goes up, our prices will go up if it goes down?
Some people, it's like orange, because if it's oil, it's, it affects the jet and so it's hard to be changed.
Right. Other questions from council members? Then we would need a motion for the pre-buy.
I'll make a motion, and we accept the pre-buy price through Friends.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Discussion from council first. Anybody? Any other? Anne, you had something?
My question was already answered.
It was answered, okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. And any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is to appoint the Vermont League of Cities and Towns as board delegate for their annual meeting. And in the past, I've represented the city at the meeting, and I'm able to go and do it again this year. It's actually easier to get to, it's in South Earlton versus Rutland.
Well, in that case, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion and continue in deposition.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'd love to second that.
Then any other discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is the recreation rates and fees for 2019. We have Jessica here to present rates. The other thing I admit is this is bigger.
It's bigger.
I had to actually get a magnifying glass.
I'm proud of them, just in case someone's buying it tomorrow.
And the font was light, so I...
I know. Every year, I think to myself, boy, I should make this bigger. If we make it landscape, then it'd be a little bigger, but just leave it over there. Figure your packets are thick enough. Maybe if I, bigger could stay solid, there won't be any questions.
Darken this font over here.
Yeah. So those are the old rates. You can see those 2015 through 18 listed on here for comparison purposes. And then 2019 rates, the gray areas are anything new or of note. Everything else has just gotten a 3% increase, which is a standard practice for the Red Department. We did add a few clarification rates, I guess, on here. These are things that we've charged in the past, but we haven't necessarily listed them separately. And the purpose there, especially if we're looking at the city dock, is there's our standard docking slips where we can tie up boaters, but our big docks, which are grant funded, they have certain restrictions on them, so we're limited to certain types of use and things like that. So we had to differentiate those a little bit. So that's, that's the difference there. You can also see that the dicky dock and the kayaking canoe storage racks are gonna remain the same this season. That was because we had a pretty big jump last season, so we figured we'd just leave that alone for now. We reduced the fee for pumpouts last year, or this, this year, it was $21 for a pumpout for a boat, and we decided to knock that down to five, free for Newport residents, but five for any visitors that are coming in. And the purpose is that we hope to take advantage of CBA grants in the future, which will then have the state reimbursing us for those pumpouts, as opposed to passing that on to the user. And the state has an interest in that, because they want more people to pump out. They don't want to discourage anyone from doing that, for water quality purposes. So there's that. And of course, we're not doing mooring installations or inspections anymore, because it's not a safe practice, and our insurance company has said, mm, that's not the best idea for us to do. So we've decided to put that out to a private contractor to handle those peaks and dutes, so we removed those rates. And then Gardner Bark and Pride Beach are...
On the dock?
Yeah.
Just before, since we're there. So boat services weren't available, so you're charging by the hour?
Yeah.
That's, that's probably a much better way.
Yeah.
Because I know sometimes it would take two hours for the, to go over back, and it really wasn't cost effective at that. The only other, one thing I was looking at was the big dock. We have the first two hours free, and then it's, what, $10 an hour after?
Yeah.
The only concern I had with that, I'm not quite sure how we could differentiate. We have people coming down, and they want to tie up and go out to eat. Well, you know it's gonna be, we're trying to welcome people. Two hours is cutting it close. The time you go to a restaurant, you eat, you get served, you know, you walk around Main Street. I didn't know if that could be increased from the two-hour minimum to some, some reasonable number, because I kept thinking that, like I was saying, it takes time when you go out to eat, especially when restaurants are busy, and you want to encourage people to come down.
I think that that could be flexible. It's kinda came directly from our harbor master, but I, from my perspective, I think if that makes sense. I think we, we brought those rates in according to what we saw elsewhere, so they were baseline. If the council wishes to change that, you know, certainly we can...
It's something to think about, because I was just trying to do timing of, you know, we try to have people come down.
And you can see, up to four hours is still the same rate, so it's only $20, you know, you get up to four hours. So it's, it's kind of a little bit weird. First two hours free, and then it becomes $10 an hour, but then, so four hours, it's only $20. Or at least $40 for four hours. So if we would like to change that, or the council wishes to change that, it's certainly what we can do.
Yeah, it's something to think on, because I was just... Okay. That's, that's what I had on that. I was just kinda, that's what stuck out.
I think there's really nothing else, except we've removed a couple tents, because they're, they're out of condition, and we don't, they're more reliable to rent out. And then the bandwagon and the P.A. system, we've left the same as here, instead of increasing which, because there was a large jump last year. Those are all the, the major differences. The biggest hurdles were done last year, so... Does anyone else have any questions on the actual grades?
Can I ask a question? The bandwagon was refurbished last year, so it's in good shape, and it's very still unready.
It's easier, yeah, certainly it's easier. Yep. We do have that restricted for local use only, just because it is still a refurbished paint wagon, so it doesn't travel long distances very well. But it is, yeah, it's in much better condition now. Our guys love that.
Mr. Mayor? Did you want to suggest any time, any specific time for those two walking please?
Do you think a three-hour, first three hours, maybe might be more appropriate?
Yeah. I mean, three hours seems, I'm just trying to think, when you come down, and you go through customs, go by, or whatever. I think three hours is a start, and maybe we could experiment in the city.
We could just gauge it, and if you're...
Not yet.
If we feel like there's pushback or anything, we can have the harbor master just keep an eye on that, and make notes if there's any issues and...
Yeah. So maybe have first three hours and make that change. I think that's a, that's a reasonable...
One other...
Go ahead.
I was over at the Pride Beach area this weekend, and someone over there asked me if there was a possibility of putting cable in.
For like TVs and stuff?
Because they don't have satellite dishes.
Yeah.
And there's always company that you're going to have. And then I was wondering that, because they were parked in the side opposite the entry room. A strip was down along the trees. Maybe just the section, maybe that section, we have a section that has cable availability, because I know most of the people that are within the center, they usually have satellite dishes.
Yeah, that's our season most typically, yeah. So we could look into that. We've been battling with some infrastructure over there, a lot of the power, especially the internet issues we've been having over the last year and a half are pretty challenging, and they come at a pretty hefty price day. So we could certainly look into that, and I can get back to the council though, what it would cost to have a job like that done.
Because this person said they didn't want to pay extra...
It'd be like a extra rental, because some campgrounds offer various levels of service, and that could be where, okay, if I have access to water, sewer, and cable, charge it higher for the night beach cover.
Yeah, we have a few crime sites like that, and also based on the view, and the website, and things like that. But I will, I will mention that to Andy and have him, so he can price something else, and it would take for me something like that happen.
Some, some campgrounds do offer that as a service. Not for every site, but some sites and campgrounds.
I wanted to talk about the, the prices for boat rentals, kayaks, canoes, rowboats. I noticed that for bikes, for example, a Newport city resident can get a bike for free. A non-resident, it's $10 a day. When we go up to the boat rentals, it's $10 an hour, $31 for four hours, $53 for the day. I'm thinking about wanting to encourage physical activity, and I know a couple of years ago, I wanted to rent some kayaks and went with a few of my children, and at the end of the day, it was like $80 for a couple of hours excursion, and it just, for me, doesn't feel like a very friendly or doable price for most families. And I'm wondering if, A, we can do a resident rate, or maybe some free items in there, and B, consider lowering the price of each of those. And kayak rental, uh, excuse me, the storage rental as well, 75, I know you said you raised it last year, but that, that seems like a lot of money to have your kayak in a stationary spot. I know you said you raised it last year, but that seems like a lot of money to have your kayak in a stationary spot.
It's for the whole season, so it's a made October. It's a pretty long time. And that's competitive with rates that we found. It's actually on the lower end of rates, but... So I will... How about this? For our boat rentals, can we do some comparisons about what's around? Because I don't remember the last time those prices were checked relative to other state parks and things like that. Maybe if we do a comparison, we can check and see how far we're off or in alignment or whatever, and we can come back. If those rates, see if that's more agreeable. The thing I want to remind everyone, this is... These are the rates that... There's some things on here that we know internally. We have rates for, but they're not necessarily published. For example, our sailboats, we don't advertise that we have sailboats for renting, because there's a certain skill level it takes to man a sailboat. But we do have people that have taken the class that the Rec Department offers and are able to use those sailboats. So if they don't have their own and they like to use them, we do have a rate for that. So, but as far as the boats and bikes, the canoes and kayaks are definitely the public. I'm not sure about the rowboats, but I'll check them. Andy will do a little more research on there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the other thing is that these, you know, these rates that are here, a lot of these are what we get that, you know, large event, or the applications that come through for those rate fees. When we have staff in for parades and stuff, this is that moment where we decide, is the value really there? And this is the bread and butter. This is the $330,000 that the Rec Department brings in every year to offset our, you know, $479 budget. So we're bringing in the money here from these users, which most of these rates are pretty competitive to help so that the taxpayer doesn't have to, you know, bear the weight of the entire Rec Department. So we want to be sensitive that we do want to invite everyone to use these things. We don't want to price ourselves out, but we need to make sure that we're keeping those things in mind, too.
I think a resident doesn't agree. It might be... Because we have that problem, thanks.
Sure. That's very doable.
And I also wanted to ask about usage of the gymnasium downstairs. I don't know why I was thinking that you could reserve it and use it for free if you just wanted to play some basketball or something. Is that not the case? I see that it's $33 an hour.
So this is for a private rental. Somebody wants to come in on a Saturday and have their birthday party in there, then they do have to pay. Andy will pay that. If somebody wants to come in and shoot hoops during the week, if I'm here or if somebody's in the Rec Department, we can open the doors and unlock them and supervise. Basically, there's someone in the building that knows to close up afterwards and is kind of keeping an eye on things. People are more than welcome to come in and shoot during business hours. And so if it's after hours and it's taking time away from the public, then it's considered private use.
Other questions? So probably table this so that you could do some research as far as the rates.
Would it be okay if we moved on the rest of them and just table the ones that are up for discussion? My only purpose for requesting that is we're trying to upload the content onto our online software so that we can start taking things starting January 1st. And there's quite a bit of work that is involved in that. I'd really rather not go back in and change rates afterwards. So if I can at least get started on the things that are approved, that would be helpful. And then we can come back and check on the big dock fees and the boat rentals over at Pride Beach. What do you think? Those are the only two?
Okay.
I mean, then this, your project would probably be a new facility or adjustment.
And there was also mention of the kayak canoe storage.
Okay, yeah.
So do we... I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the items that are okay.
So...
A motion made to accept the proposed recreation fees with the exception of the ones being questioned. More homework. Is there a second to that? Sorry, to remain seconded, discussion? Ann had her hand now. I mean, Ann Pam.
I don't think your words change. The... You raised the question about the two hours, and thought about that being inadequate and suggested three. I would suggest four, because we want people to come downtown and spend money. So they go to a restaurant, they have a really nice meal, they're all mellow and relaxed, they start to stroll up the street. There's Mac, there's other stores. If they're on a really tight timeline, the city itself, the stores do not go to benefit. It's not just the Rec Department that's important to you. The city itself is... We want people to come.
Um, Jen, you guys have a thing? I'm here actually with questions about the increase for the fees for the softball fields, for the Women's League, actually. None of them can make it, so they asked me because they knew I was really close. We know that the fees have to go up, but questions are, the field's going to be in better condition. Like, Field 2, the backstop doesn't go all the way down, a lot of balls get lost again there. Pitch and mounds, a lot of the season, there was big holes in the dirt. Half the time there was a break. There was a lot of issues with the fields. And if the rates go up again, are these issues going to be actually met? For, not just for the Women's League, but, you know, you guys do a really good job lining. For a lot of times, like the men, get the benefit of having it nice and smooth. And we get their gopher holes at the home plate, so it isn't smooth for us. So we get to deal with their leftovers. So is that going to be addressed with the increase? And, you know, what was the other question? Where does the money go that we actually pay for use of the fields?
So the money at Garden of Park, let's see. Amongst all of our ball fields and all of the rentals that we have for field use, we bring in... For field rentals. It's about, we have $6,000 budgeted this year to remove for revenue. So that salary and the guys that work there is all covered by the revenue that comes in. Some of it comes, most of it comes from the ball fields. The rest of it, there's a few rentals and stuff here and there. So that salary, and the guys that are working now, all the staff salary time, all of the paint, all of the tools, all of the operating expenses, all the toilet paper that's in there to use for the bathrooms and stuff. So we recognize that there's some issues on there. There's some major infrastructure issues. The bathrooms are horrendous. We totally get that. So these, the revenue that we receive from this and the way that it goes up all the time kind of compensates for the increased costs of all those things, but also helps us put money towards projects. And there's a lot of competing projects there. So I do know that Matt brought to our staff meeting last week, discussion about the backstops and what we can do there. And there's pretty big costs associated with replacing those. We're looking at some other alternatives. And then as far as the other tops and things like that, I was the first that I heard of it. So if you guys have specific projects, the lady softball, and you want to have Pam or anyone put it in an email or let me know, you can try to get those on the high priority list. I don't know if someone's spoken to Matt about that or not. He kind of has a better understanding of the maintenance schedule at Garden of Park. If there's a specific thing that you guys want to see paid attention to, definitely let us know and we can factor that in. But the fees aren't... The normal 3% increase is not to cover any one specific project. It's kind of put into the pool of what can we do at Garden of Park.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, though, there's probably not a one-on-one correlation. There is a correlation between keeping people busy and playing and the gym and having the gym available even in the evenings, and concern that the city has about drug use. People who are out, active, doing things are less likely to get involved and in trouble with other things. So if you can keep the gym open at night and not charge fees for it, that's really, in my mind, a cost-effective way of dealing with the city's recognition of a drug problem.
So just to clarify for the council, that we closed the gym last fall because there was a lot of vandalism happening during outside hours and even during inside hours when the police department and everyone's right here. And there's actually, what we found is the most of the demographic that's using the gym in an unsupervised fashion, our kids that are actually...
I can't hear you. Can you speak hello?
Our kids that are actually making some trouble inside the gym. So it's certainly not a legal problem, I don't think. We've heard some... My office door is literally right next to the gym balcony, so I can hear the conversations and the swearing and the cursing and the inappropriate things that are happening in there by these unsupervised people. Not to mention that even now, the gym is closed during public hours. We've been struggling with people still getting in there somehow. We're not sure if there are keys that are on the loose or if we're accidentally leaving the door open when we're cleaning it or what the issues are. But just last week, we had our people ball group, who is a user of the gym, who has a key. We've given permission. They're a very well-run recreational program, the kind that we want to see. They have their own key. They went in there, and there was trash and soda bottles and everything strewn all over the benches. Somebody had broken into the padlocked closet and had yarded a riddle and broke the locker and off it. Didn't take anything out of there, but it's just things like that that we're battling with constant issues, people being unsupervised. So if we could afford to have somebody supervising, then I think it would be a great asset. But we're not at that point to have somebody there. And even me, unfortunately, I'm not in my office all the time to allow people in there. So we kind of... Unfortunate that a small group has ruined it for the larger population, but until we figure out a better solution, it's kind of...
Is there a way to get volunteers to kind of supervise it? Because I know, you know, there are people, you know, sometimes seniors are looking to volunteer. Or it's a way to get maybe the different groups to interact. And that might have a positive effect on some of, as you say, questionable activities. So I don't know if there's a way we could look into maybe volunteers down there?
We did actually reach out to the community last year after we closed it down to ask if anyone would be interested in coming in to host some gym time, open gym time. We did have one mom step forward and say, "Yeah, I'll come in two hours after, on Thursdays after school, because my kids would love to go in there and play, too." So she went in, did do that. She was aware of the challenging demographic that was likely going to come into that space. But lucky for her, she had it so filled with small kids that it kind of kept the other ones away. So that was successful. What we would need is more people that are able to do that. And then we have to have some sort of process for that because what was happening is the group of troubled, the troubled group that was coming in was actually sending an older one of their group in to say, "I'm over 18. Can I supervise?" And I, it was really hard for me to figure out a correct way to say, um, that's, uh, no. So I think that there could, that process could work. You just would have to fine tune it a little bit.
You'd have to fine tune. And of course, with any volunteer, if they're going to be around you, they have to have a background check.
Well, and we've also...
In today's, you know...
And we've also had some trouble with inconsistency that our volunteers, because of the drop in time. If they can't make it on a given time, we end up with the gym locked because they weren't able to make it and aren't able to spread that message to the community and let them know that it's canceled tonight. That creates frustration and so on.
Maybe somebody can just make a note.
What's that?
Maybe you can make a note that maybe we could resurrect the volunteer or try to...
Give it another shot.
Give it another shot, just to see, you know, that might help keep it open more.
Yeah, I suspect that once fall rolls around, the outdoor courts start to close up, that there'll be more requests for the gym, and we'll give it another shot.
Anything else? Yes.
I've kayaked for the Kingdom Swim for the last 10 years, and I'm out on the lake from anywhere from three to six hours. When I come in and it's sunny, I have to go to the bathroom. And I walk into that bathroom, and it's so dark in there. I'm running into walls, and it's just awful. A coat of white paint in there with good wonders. I mean, even more lights would be better, but at the very least, brighten up the walls so when you walk in, you can see where it's going.
And the gateway around, is that where you're?
No.
Pride Beach. Oh, Pride Beach.
A glow in the dark. Yeah, right. A glow in the dark.
Yeah.
We can think of it as a rustic camp floor.
Stop going. You run into the wall and you can't find the toilet stall for the shower.
Can't move this way or this way.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Okay. Anything else? Then, we had a motion, and we had it seconded. Then all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is the public records request policy, excuse me, review and update and possible vote. This was tabled from the last meeting so that people could have a chance to review it.
So one thing I want to point out is this was generated by our law firm for the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And I showed it to them again after our last meetings that pertains to the questions that had come up. In this version of the public records, the city attorney made two changes. One is on creation of public records. He added one sentence. I just want to find that section. On the creation of public records, he said, "The custodian will not create a public record that does not exist. Except that the custodian may do so if he or she believes that doing so will be more efficient than otherwise." Then they made the same change for transmission of public records. "The custodian will not transmit a public record except that the custodian may do so if he or she believes that doing so will be more efficient than otherwise." The other recommendation is to use the Secretary of State's rates and fees. And so if you look on page three, it will say, "The city of council hereby adopts the following fee structure with regard to public records as established by the Secretary of State." I think you have a copy of that in your packets. The uniform fee schedule? Yeah. So you can see what those charges are. Other than that, everything else remains the same.
Questions, council members?
I'm not sure I heard correctly. So Stissel Paige and Fletcher, the city attorney, wrote the policy for the LCT as a model policy. And then you ran that by them, ran the policy as it stood by them, who created it, and then they suggested a few changes?
They suggested creation of public records, which I'm just looking for that section there with me. Page four.
Yeah, page four.
Has to do with format. There it is. "The custodian will not create a public record that does not exist, except that the custodian may do so if he or she believes that doing so will be more efficient." And then put the same sentence in for transmission. The reason they did that is because they have had some time working with this policy. He said he has not overdone it, overdone the review, but there are sections which are based on the model, policy, and forms to take a closer look. They suggest these two, and it's because the original wording and the model have been tricky to work with. Some offices have experienced that they can actually make life easier by being able to create a public record. For example, if somebody wants a town report, they can provide a printout of the report. But there has to be some standard, however, and here the standard is efficiency so that the policy does not give custodians authority to vary from the policy without any guidebooks.
I'm trying to interpret that again. It sounds like, "A custodian will not create a public record that does not exist, except that the custodian may do so if he or she believes that doing so will be more efficient." Am I interpreting that as saying, so if there's no public record, the custodian can create one? Is that, that's how I'm interpreting. That seems kind of weird.
What the attorney has explained is the point is that there are times when it is, in fact, easier for the town to run a report and provide a printout of that report. But there has to be some standard included, which here is efficiency, so that the policy does not give custodians authority to vary from the policy without any guidebooks.
So for example, I wanted a printout of the...
Suppose you wanted...
I would say something in Jim's office with the budget, some certain section of the budget. It's not... It's not real, it's not online in real time, but it's not in printed format. So you're actually creating that public record. I guess that's kind of an analogy in a roundabout way.
Probably a roundabout.
I'm just trying to get in my mind that aspect.
Obviously, we're not going to create something that doesn't exist. But if somebody has a question and there is no record, but we could be able to print out a report from Nemmer, we would do that.
And you're actually creating the record then?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Are you calling on me?
I guess so.
Okay, I just, it's a simple one. I just was wondering what transmission is that's on.
So have you looked at these online yet?
I have, I just...
Me, I assume there's email, yeah, email.
Or fax or something.
Fax, email, that's any type of transmission. That's what I'm assuming.
Right.
Okay. That's what I assume. You're faxing it or you're emailing it.
Can I just make an observation? Printing a copy of something doesn't change the fact that it's already a public record. So that's kind of, that's just the format by which the person asked for a copy of it. So it's kind of like, I think that's where, Mr. Mayor, you're going, huh? I don't get it. Because it's already a public record. So you're just putting it out to someone.
But he doesn't have access to his files, you know, generally. So you're printing a copy and creating. That's where I was going.
Well, you're making a copy of something, but it's not really making a new record.
I'm probably confusing the issue. But I was just trying to think. Because they don't have access to his computers and his records. But...
He's making a copy in a format of a public record. That's not what that, that says. And it's probably a legal thing?
Probably some legal terminology, but beyond me, because I'm not a lawyer.
The person sitting in his office is very important. That's all.
No, it's probably some legalese. I was just trying to put analogy to it and trying to...
I don't know if there's...
I'm just trying to, you know, I was trying to visualize what it could be.
I think if you said, "Create a copy in a format for somebody," then it makes sense. But to create a new document, a new public record, I'm not, I don't know, I don't get it.
Yeah.
It says, "The custodian will not create a public record that does not exist, except that the custodian may do so if he or she believes that doing so will be more efficient."
That's the analogy of...
Again, the example he gives is running a report.
Yeah.
So running a report, for example, from Nemmer may be more efficient to just run a report and provide a report than doing a lot of research to try to determine what public record may be trying to tease out.
Okay.
We do that. People have a reasonable request. Everything we can do to get them to agree.
So you already do it?
Yeah, already do it.
Okay.
Nothing changed.
All right. Anything else on the, um, public records, I must say? Go ahead.
Well, if you read the Ramon Legas of Cities and Towns, their recommendation is that we only have one policy in all departments here. Now I know the police department has its own policy. So I guess, and I understand the police department has other issues that we wouldn't have here or review his office. But they're all addressed in the same state statute. There's no difference between the state statute that he has to use and what we have to use. So I'm not sure that we really have to have two separate ones. You know?
Then if that's your position, my recommendation would be that the city follow yourselves under the police because that's got very strict definition order to protect the police records, particularly those that are underlying investigation.
Well, that was one of my other things. That we're kind of short on definitions than the policy that we have. So if you want to understand something, you're going to go someplace else to look. That's my only, you know? And even though he's put in writing more steps and stuff...
And it's been approved because he has his own rates and fees.
It's been approved, I understand that. But I also understand what they recommend. Okay? So their recommendation isn't really what we're doing. We're creating one just for...
I'm trying to create a records policy for all the other offices. So that...
So each office will have their own policy?
The rest of the municipality will have this policy. So not each department. What I'm trying to do is have a records policy so that when someone comes forward and wants other information, we hand them the forms, whatever the relevant point is. They know what to expect, they know the timelines. They realize that there may be fees associated that are hidden. We either provide it, provide it in part, provide it redacted, or don't provide it for the reasons that are outlined in the forms which have the statute outlined as well. So what I'm trying to do is adopt tools for the city. And previous city council had requested this. And the rest is up to you.
Okay. You're making it sound like I'm against, I'm not against the policy. I'm understanding, I'm trying to understand why, when they recommend that you have one policy for everybody, that we're going to have separate policies. That's what I'm trying to understand. Because we don't meet the recommendation that they gave.
So again, the police department has special needs.
They have the same needs we do. They fall under the same state statute that we use.
They do have...
So they don't have any special needs. They have special exemptions which are outlined in those statutes.
So one of the things that we want to make sure is that we're not running interference with what the police needs in order to conduct their business which is specialized.
I understand that. But I also understand it's the same statute.
Right, it is, but some of the things, maybe Robin knows when he requests police things. It's difficult because it's an affidavit. It's not a public document. Tell a judge...
And that is addressed in the statute. So he can deny based on that. He doesn't have to have a special for him to address the issues that he needs to address. He can address them under the state policy, which this is recreating. But that's okay. I just want that point to be made, that the recommendation is that we have one policy.
So may I ask a question? So what's different for the police departments versus what the Secretary of State... Can you give us a couple examples? I mean, I can think of some, but I don't want to assume that.
Chief, do you have yours on the top of your hand?
I have a policy right here on my phone. I'm not sure, why do I have a policy? Because the LCT told me to have one. It's that simple. Literally. And that policy... I understand what you're saying, Mr. Ross. You could propose that policy for the entire city. I can't think of a reason why it wouldn't work, but I don't, I'm not a subject matter expert in anything that anybody else does except...
I just look at things that I agree. Now here's a statement from the Ramon Legas of Cities and Towns. Now this is the thing that we're looking at. "This model has been developed for illustrative purposes only. The LCT makes no express or implied endorsement or recommendation of any policy." So they don't recommend policies. Nor does it make any express or implied guarantee of legal enforceability or legal compliance. Now I've looked at this and I've looked at the state statute. And it mimics the state statute. I see nothing wrong with this policy. The only thing I was looking at is the other statement where the recommendation is, is the community should only have one policy. And I understand why you need one. You know, people are always asking for things from you that they can't have. And if you look at the court records and stuff, nine times out of 10, if there's a legal challenge, there's something over what the police department has and not what we have on this side. We don't have anything really controversial over here. And that's all I wanted to say.
Anything else, council members?
I'll reiterate once again that I don't believe in passing policies for the sake of having policies. I don't see a need for this policy. And especially after looking at the two new sections, the creation and transmission of public records that none of us can understand, I have no interest in adopting any part of this policy.
One of my problems is, is that when we develop something, I don't want to inhibit the public from wanting to come forward and ask for things. Now, one of the things that's very open about public records is that you can come in and just ask. You don't have to fill out. And now we've had regulations. And the state allows you to have regulations because if it's more time consuming and if there's different things that happen, yes, you've got to fill out a form. But sometimes a policy will inhibit people from doing what they want to do.
The lawsuit claim per does sets out fees so that you have a right, if somebody comes forward with a request that lasts longer, it's either 30 minutes or 33 minutes, you have a right to charge. So you have a way to compensate for your resources. So it's meant to be a tool, just meant to express guidelines, accountability, not only for the organization, but for the user.
If we have a policy in the police department that's working and we adopt that for the entire city versus just having this separate policy? Because it's working for Seth and his department and it's following state statute, we could just...
You could. You would have to have a special hearing to make sure that you adopt the rates and fees for this.
But I think we could just adopt his policy for the whole city. It would make it life simpler.
Or at least look at it.
Look at it.
See if there's any issues with it.
That's just something I was throwing out there. Because I agree, you know, why have duplicates if we already have one that's working in a department? Why create another one for the rest of the city? That's the way I look at it.
Well, I would be willing to make a motion. I would make a motion to re-table the public records policy for further investigation. And in two weeks, look at the matter again.
We could get a copy of the police department policy.
Is the policy somewhere? I'm trying to find it.
I don't think so. But here we could, so you want to table it until the next meeting? That way we could get a copy of it and look at it. So motions made or a second?
A second.
Made and seconded, discussion?
The council wants a full copy of the police department public records policy while we're in the next meeting so people can have a chance to have it. Like not the day of. I don't know, I just want to put it online. I mean, that's wonderful.
It's an adopted policy, it's a matter of... Okay, so motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye. Who opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, the next item is electronic marquee policy. Council members have had time to review it. This is a policy that actually came from myself versus the city manager. It's something I felt that we needed. I did have a conversation with the city attorney on the policy. We chatted for quite a while. And he made two changes to what I had written. He recommended adding under priority of messages. He recommended the city also reserves the right to accept or reject proposed messages and to limit the duration of any messages with sole and absolute discretion. He recommended that. My conversation with him, I agreed with that change. And then he recommended eliminating a sentence under duration of messages. It was vague. And so those are the two recommended changes that the attorney recommended to the actual policy.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if you've reached out to the Bessets and gotten their permission to change what we said we would do with your donation? We've got a couple of emails and a letter that you signed to Janet and Harmon that clearly delineates, that is from municipal messages. This is on their tax letter. And it's signed by you and me. And it says specifically in this, "The sign will be used by all the city departments to notify and engage the public about events, cautions, meetings, votes, expectations, et cetera." This would simply not be possible without regeneration donation. So given that we represented that to them, I just want to make sure we have their blessing to move forward in this direction.
I looked at that event as not just city events. That's the way I look at that. And so I have not reached out to them regarding this because I look at the sign as, their goal of the sign was to bring the community together and to promote community. And what better way than to promote downtown and certain events? The policy that I came up with is very limiting. I mean, it doesn't, it's not carte blanche because some people wanted everything put out there, everything. And then, so I came up with a policy that I thought was a happy medium. It allows Newport-only nonprofits. You can't be in Derby, you can't be whatever. It's going to be Newport-only. And that will limit it to downtown. And we keep hearing from various studies and events, these studies and groups that visit, that we need to do more to promote downtown, more to promote events and more, just to promote Newport. And I see the sign as a way of doing that. And so that's why I came up with the policy. Because I felt strongly that we need to do something, what little bit we can do as a municipality to help with that. And that's why I came up with this. And I don't see anything that really goes against the Bessets' wishes because the city messages take priority already. With this, you're not going to have, I don't think you're going to have an overabundance of requests. I was adding up the other night at home all the nonprofits in town or whatever and the amount of events that they might request beyond the sign. So...
So what was your idea, moving on to that? What was your idea for implementation?
What do you mean?
When you came up with this, what was your idea for actually implementing the program, working with the individuals? Who did you have in mind to do that?
Who oversees the sign right now? I understand the rec department. I understand every department's supposed to be trained in that sign. That was my impression. Do you have access? My impression that every department...
I have access to Jess.
To Jess?
I don't have access to Jess.
Yeah.
So what were you, I mean, what were you thinking? One of your emails says that you anticipated it was going to be as much as five hours a week.
That was just an example. That was the worst-case scenario. And I don't foresee that at all. And I looked at the demo software. And it can't be, it's not that complicated to run from the software, to run the sign, from what I've seen.
Did you have a chance to try it?
I haven't tried the actual live version, but I know enough from looking at that. You can set up templates. You can set up templates so that if you have standard requests coming in, you populate the template and then you upload it to the sign. That's the way, my looking at the demo, you can create various templates.
You can create...
To streamline.
It's pretty much...
It's pretty much a possibility to...
Right, but I'm thinking a template could be used for standard requests. So, a downtown group wants to have, I'll use the library as an example, a book sale, you could have the standard template for that, where it's just some text, which can't, to me, shouldn't take hours to put up on a sign, you know? That was my thinking.
So I'm just curious, where did this baseline template come from?
What baseline template?
You said that when you drafted this, you talked to a few different places, was there somewhere that you found...
I talked to Foster City, where the original one link that I had...
Foster City?
They're in another state.
Where in California?
California.
And how many is their population in that area?
Population shouldn't have anything to do with this.
Is there a presentation on the agenda? Not that I see.
No, I just wanted to plug the sign and take a look. Same thing, Hoppin.
One of the things that we learned in that particular municipality is we have thirty-six people who operate in their recreation department, and I know that...
Oh, I understand that, but I'm looking at this as, we're not going to be, we're not Foster City with thirty-five thousand people. We're not going to have thousands of requests, the way I look at it.
It is going to require resources that we weren't anticipating. It is going to require time, it is going to require a process for back and forth that we were not anticipating.
So, my question, the reason why I asked was, it's true, that everything that's been on that sign so far, there's been one person that's been handling that so far, and that's me. I've hosted, we sat with multiple people, multiple, many of my colleagues through the initial demonstration before the sign was even installed. We sat through a two- or three-hour demonstration to kind of learn how the whole thing works. The possibilities are definitely endless. And then, after the sign was installed, it was many months after that initial training, we all had to go in after the centennial, and our brains were all cooked. I had to go back in and re-figure it out myself. After that, we sat down with all, there was probably six of us that were in here, and went through, and I presented another training, and gave them some hands-on, and showed them blow-by-blow, how do I make the edits? And these are just the very basic slides that I knew and figured out how to do so far. Every single person that sat through that hour-long training together all shook their head in agreement and admired how lovely it was, but then they all agreed silently that they were just going to, well, yeah, we'll get our stuff on there, we can close things out, we need to, if it's overdue, but we're just going to get our stuff to Jess, and she can take care of it. There's a little bit more to it than what meets the eye. And what I've found, and this is not the charm part of it, don't get, don't get me wrong, I think that it's great to have events in the community, and I'm all for that, but there's some lackluster realities that come along with the sign and the logistics that are behind it. And the policy that you've shown, it shows a basic lack of understanding of what the capabilities are, and even the basic things like the size of the sign, marquee. What I think was most disappointing when I got my hands on this is the fact that the one person that has a clue about our sign and our community and how that works wasn't even asked about how to put something together, what the...
I want to have a disclaimer, when I first proposed this, I got kickback from the manager and yourself. We didn't even want to have anything to do with this policy. I want to have that out there. I got kickback of not even having it on the agenda. They didn't even want to discuss it. And that's, I want that out there for everyone to know.
Oh, you're absolutely right, and so we're here and that one's on.
No, but you wanted it so that I didn't even want to bring this up. And then, when the manager put out to the press, basically, what's the sign's used for and what it's not going to be used for, which technically is a policy for the city, which should have come to the city council. Any public policy comes to the council, and that did not come to the council.
This is operations.
And that sign, it needs a policy.
This is what I think, because we have to figure out how to do what you want to have done to us. As Jess says, you got to this point, we invited you to the training and you didn't come. We could have, we could have enlightened you to the things that we need.
I'd like to check this, because it just seems like we're going to have a total disagreement. What I have a disagreement with, as a council member, you said, you interpreted the information between the donor, have you felt there is? She had communication with the donor, probably more than you, because being the city manager, you start doing more of the back and forth. So now, we have an interpretation problem. Have you seen the documentation from the donor? So you can look at it and say, what did the donor wish back then? Did you see the information from the donor?
No, but I would make an assumption that if somebody's going to donate a sign like that, they would allow the city to use it for the community's benefit. I would safely make that assumption.
Well, you can safely make it, but we haven't seen the information to document that.
I have two, two pieces of, one is an email, one is a formal letter.
I mean, this one here says, "The least controversial and probably best practice is to limit the posting of messages on the L E D sign to only city-related messages."
And Barota, David Drew.
Now, I didn't see people wind up to press little letters onto the old sign. They had no problem just letting it sit there and let the city put what they wanted on it.
Nor does anyone challenge the marquee that's over at the fire station either.
So, if I can understand that, although you, Jess, do most of the work, that there are untold people that have access to the sign?
There are about six people that sat through that training, that are city employees that have an understanding, and all of which, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, those that are in this room, all of which said, mm, not interested.
It's going to take, it takes a certain mastery. You have to have some comfort with it, you have to get familiar with, like any program. It requires time, which we don't have, and it requires execution, requires scheduling it so the sign, so the information goes up and then comes down, and then you have something else to replace it with.
There's a couple other nuances too that come along with that, the imaging and stuff, the logos that it takes to create, even just this one of the police department, just finding things that can come through in clarity, there's some transition that has to happen with an initial graphic that we get, and all of these things, I'm still even learning myself, and I've been the only one that's been working on it. And you can see that the sign itself says the city of Newport on there, and so when we have things that are on the slide, these are just little nuances, and they're not glamorous, but this is the real truth. So we have things on there like this. When you're looking at the criteria that you're giving folks to get on that sign, there are, there are strict, there's a certain number of letters and words, which, there's even a little bit more flexibility than what's here, but once you start...
I was trying to make that simple. That's the reason why you have that template. I was trying to just make it as simple as possible for the sign.
Yeah, just hear me out.
That was only a template.
Yeah, I get it, just hear me out. When you, and obviously, these are things that I've learned when trying to populate our own messages on there. So we have this big header on the top, this is City of Newport, right? So everyone assumes, if you were coming in from out of town, you would assume that the things that are on there, if there was no other contact information given on your slide, naturally, who would you call? The city of Newport, right? And so, the criteria that we need to ask people, like the who, what, where, when, and in order to fit all of that on one slide, and then have to differentiate contact information and things like that on top of that, it starts to get a little bit challenging. Not to mention that with things like logos, I've learned from the whole event thing, that there's a lot of coaching that goes back and forth with organizations that come through and want to use some services or things like that, and there's a lot of help. The amount of time that it would take to get people's stuff right and things like that, we'd want to give them the best product, right? So if they have a logo, they would want to get it up there. Five hours a week, which even if that was worst-case scenario, that's twelve percent of our forty-hour work week to spend on a marquee. These are things that I, the only person in the rec department that does any administration, you know, our other two full-time employees are out doing facilities, I'm the only one in the rec department, so unless there's somebody else that's jumping up to want to do this, I don't need anything more for people to get disappointed on me because I'm not getting it up there on time, or we have to tell somebody no for some reason? Mr. Mayor, your policy says that this would open it up to government information and community events. Do you believe that the book sale at the library is a community event?
Yes.
You think that's a community?
How much money do you put into the library?
No, no, just...
I'm not, there's nothing against the library, but...
I do consider that a community event.
Do you?
Yes.
You think that's an event? So, people from out of town would come in to, okay. So, therein lies the issue, there's a lot of flexibility, what you would consider, I guess, a community event. So, there's a lot of requests that are going to be coming in. Think about the banner requests that we get that are four to, four and five a month, that's for people that have to put skin in the game to put their banner up and pay for that to get it up there. These types of requests will...
Remember, all those banners are from out-of-town organizations.
But I don't want to be the one that says, sorry, yours can't go on there because we're full, or for whatever reason. I don't want to have to spend time advocating for the reasons why we're unable to fulfill the wishes of many people. And that is not a glamorous thing, but it's a logistical truth. So, that's what I wanted to ask. Who updates the website? The Parks and Recreation Department website? Any city municipal part of the website. So we have a separate website, the Parks and Recreation Department, I do that. As far as the city, I have no idea in this business.
Becky and I both do. We're terrible at it.
What would be the criteria? With the events policy, I don't, yes, it's, it's set down on criteria. Is it going to be a similar thing for the marquee?
That was all spelled out. It's spelled out when the message comes in.
And then, it says that the number of messages which appear in any given time period is limited, because this is infinite. We could put a thousand messages up there if we had the time and desire to do so. So, that's a pretty subjective or objective...
Which one?
Says, under priority of messages, the number of messages which will appear at any given time period is limited. Therefore, during busy times, the city may elect to limit or not program submitted events. I am not going to be the one to say, sorry, I don't have time to put your stuff up there. So if someone else would like to take over the marquee and handle that bit, and I know it's not glamorous, and it, but we're not trying to be hateful, we're not trying to be selfish with the sign. But the unfortunate part is you can't say yes to everyone, and so who's going to be the one to say no?
We could go back to the policy of when banners used to have to come to the council. You could have that come to the council, the decision of the council. But it used to be way back, as far as all the banners.
And that's what the council wants to spend?
No, but I'm just saying that's a way. I'm only trying to get it so that Newport doesn't always look like we're against the community.
Yes.
And that's what I was trying to do, because it's coming across that it's always no, 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 from the city and from whatever. And I just saw this as a way of reaching out. I read these various studies again, that we need, they all keep coming back to, we need to do more to promote downtown, and I saw this as a way of promoting downtown events. And that's where I was coming with this policy.
I appreciate that sentiment, but I think there's some fourth line. This may not be the one thing to make that happen. Quite frankly, the city is not always a no, no, and the people who have that perception of the city are very deceived, because how many large events has the city said no to? How much are we giving to all of these groups to help them get started? That is just my department thought, and I'm sure that there are other things, but that mentality is not true.
I'd like to thank the chairman.
First and foremost, I want to thank you so very much for standing up for this policy, for doing the research, for putting it into writing, and for pushing back against the opinions that have come back on you from your staff. Furthermore, I would like to make a motion to adopt the electronic marquee policy as presented with the changes that were suggested by the law firm.
So, there's a motion? Is there a second at all? Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, I'm not opposed to policies in general, but we've had a marquee sign for a month and a half, and I don't know if you go across the causeway and how many you think we can read in a certain period of time. And it's very important that the important messages don't get lost. There's some, you know, there's a priority in messages that should be there. The other problem that I have is that every time something like this comes along, we're putting more work on for staff members. We can't continually put work on the staff members. Eventually, we have to say, all right, so if we want to have this to work properly, do we generate a halftime position so that somebody can review all of these things and put them on? Now, I look at it now, if we used it properly for a while with the city departments and see how it worked, you know, if the police department wanted to put something on Public Works, maybe they've got the projected street closures, you know, maybe they'd want to put projected street closures on. The fire department's always doing something, you know, it's a fundraiser. But they're always taking, but if we don't know how it works and how much time is going into it, I don't think we've had enough test time to see how it's working yet. And I think, I truly believe that you can't always say to some employee, okay, you're going to do this.
I was in the impression that every department was going to be trained, and that's where I thought that it would be a whole lot more work, and PD took care of their stuff, Jim took care of his, whatever, you know, and that's where I came up with this.
But who takes care of the public stuff that's coming in? The clubs and these other places? Who's the go-to person? Is it our city manager? Is it our rec person? Is it our executive secretary? Does she have to take over this duty? If you can tell me somebody that can do this duty, I'd be more apt to support it at this point. But I really want to see somebody that has the time to do it, and not take away from other jobs that they're doing now.
Hindsight's 2020, but what we shouldn't have had up on that sign then is community events.
I don't think it says community.
No, it did, it did for two weeks, it said community events. You know, I had that up there. But you talk about the slides and updating and all that. I can be honest with you, I'm so sick of seeing like us on Facebook. Not everyone has Facebook, you know, and that's another way I thought the sign could come in handy, because it's so easy to put everything up on Facebook, Facebook this, Facebook that, to get the word out. Well, I for one got rid of Facebook, I got sick of it, I deleted everything, and so, but no, when you see like us on Facebook, what about all the seniors and all the other people who don't have Facebook? And so, that just, that's my, was there an actual second to the motion so that we could open it to public discussion? No?
Not yet, but I'll make it so...
Make it second so we can have public discussion? Thank you, Dennis. I saw Nicole, then Sue, then Izzo.
Okay, Thursday night, we were at the Garden Park watching the band go on to the Waterfront. People decided, said, how come that wasn't on the, how come that wasn't on the sign? I'm hearing that all the time, every Thursday night at the waterfront, how come that's not on the sign? To me, this is Newport. This is Newport, that should have been on, like, like, I think the library definitely should have been on. I'm the one that called that morning to say that Len Camp's program isn't on, and it's going to be the last show of the night. And Jane spoke to Jesse, and they did put that on. We had to close the doors, Carol can tell you, fifteen, twenty minutes before. It was jam-packed, and they said, really, sorry, because of the sign. And so, what Sue said, we wanted the book sale, when we came on, a lot of people came to the centennial, it was packed, and we didn't have attention, a lot were packed, I think that that was a bad day for her boy.
I'm moving on from the library. I want to say two things. Thank you for sticking up for this, because it is so important, and I agree, like us on Facebook doesn't belong there. But the other thing is, when you're looking for somebody, I drive by the causeway probably four or five times a day, I always look at that sign. But you look at that sign up there, you see that funny thing on the left, and you think, does that say Newport? Is that the state of Vermont? Keep it simple. The ones that are simple, just plain words and very concise is perfect. You can read the whole sign, and you know what it says. But I've been by, I've seen that Newport police, and I'm like, you fixed what? What's your, what is that? Then I'm gone. So just keep the sign simple, and don't give up all, we need that. We need that sign, not only for the library, Wednesday on the waterfront, you know how popular that was? We need that sign, not only for the library, Wednesday on the waterfront, you know how popular that was? Shuffle, Friday Night Shuffle? The big picture is, we wanna bring people to Newport and show them we are friendly and we want them here. And there's no better way to do it than by that marquee, or at least that's one of the very good ways of doing it.
I'm Izzo Marks with the MAC Center for the Arts, and I really wanna express appreciation, Paul, for you putting this proposal forward. It's inclusive, it supports those who create public events for the community. The MAC holds a lot of special exhibits and performances and things. We do everything we can. We bring people down to Main Street. We do whatever we can to advertise it. We're also co-creators with JP, JP of the Downtown Shuffle. Again, another effort just to bring people downtown on Friday night a month. I think the marquee would be a really wonderful visual addition to the city, and it would help promotion efforts, not only for us and for other events, but for all of the nonprofit organizations who are trying so hard to create a place in Newport where people can gather. What I'm hearing in the last few minutes, to me, is very disappointing, because if I thought, if I were hearing that this was a good idea, and there would be a will to find a way to make it work, I would feel encouraged. But some of the things I'm hearing are people saying, "This isn't a good idea. This shouldn't be done. This takes too much time," or "It has too many letters." And I guess, that's very disappointing to me, because I really do believe that if there were a will to make it work, maybe this isn't a perfect policy with the perfect number of words, but I'm sure it would be made to work.
Yes, hello, my name's Tom Evans. I'm a little confused. Right now, are there two policies, obviously, in contradiction to each other? Is that what's happening here? Or no? It's just one policy? Okay. But, so, I guess, does someone not want Newport City News to be on it? Is that what's going on? I don't, I don't hear any issue other than time to your policy. And I'm just confused what the issue is. If it's a matter of just time, like it's been said, it's been on a month and a half, I believe. I know with a computer program, I myself is a moledite, but with time, the computer, I learn more, and it takes less time. I also know that people can be, as part of their job, mandated to do what their job is supposed to be. If it's learning how to use this program so they can help their community or their service, I think it's very reasonable to say, "You need to know how to do this." So, I'm really confused at what exactly is happening here, and that's, excuse my ignorance, but I just don't know what's going on.
Yes, to answer the question, there are two policies at issue here. One is strictly for city use by the city departments, and the other one is to have a policy that uses the city departments as well as the general public. And that's where the issue arises.
Okay, I need to try and add my mind. Yes?
I think what you gotta realize is that Newport is right on the threshold right now of anything you can do to promote it, you've got to. And you can't limit just the department heads, because a lot of people wanna read about the groups that have a walk-in or something for cancer. Or if the high school is running something that's gonna raise money, they can run a little thing on there that's gonna help them. But it's gonna promote the city because it's our well-being. So, you've gotta find a way to do it, or somebody is just gonna give up a little bit of extra time and force. Newport ain't going nowhere if you don't.
Anything else from anyone?
It's not that I would diss anything. It's just that, right now, it seems like everybody has access to the sign with department heads. And yet, Jesse's kind of in charge and knows the most what's happening. So, you have all these people, but ultimately, if something happens, we're all gonna come screaming at Jesse and say, "What happened with the sign?" And she's gonna be like, "I don't know. I didn't do this." We don't know who's in charge. You know, we gotta have one person that's responsible, one person that says, "Okay, I mean, I'm doing this. I'll take care of it." That way, if you have a question, you can go back to it. And then, it's a matter of how many hours per week. And then, we're gonna say, if the same person ordered to the policy, they can decide, you know, whether or not it's gonna go on the sign. So, we're not only gonna make this person in charge of it, we're not only saying, "You're gonna be in charge of what's, you know, telling people yea or nay."
Kevin, I also wanna mention that the most, one of the challenging parts of being that person is all of the critiques that come from everyone who wants to see a graphic more clearly, wants to keep it more simple, wants to have their picture up there, doesn't wanna have their picture up there, and the tone in which those things are delivered. That's one of the main challenging parts.
Geez, so, just to clarify on the department head portion, and I'm speaking just for the police department, I had my IT guy take this training. I don't know the first thing about programming this stuff. He came back to me and said, "This is way too labor-intensive. I do not recommend..." What we wanted, what the police department originally wanted to do is when we push out those BT alerts and say, like, you know, "This building go into lockdown," we wanted to be able to have it go immediately to the sign. Take the sign over, no other messages flash, and it would just stick there. That, it's, unfortunately, doesn't work the way that we thought it was going to in terms of being able to just enter the information in the BT alert and then push it out. I'm not going to order my dispatcher in an emergency to do something else and log into another system. And so, I came to Jess, well, Royce there, but through me, came to Jess for this. I was the one that asked for the envelope to be put up there, and I thought it would look great. It didn't work out so well, but I do appreciate your efforts.
It actually looks a lot better on the sign than it does.
It does, absolutely. So, as far as making it more complicated, I'll take all the blame for that. I just, I wanna stress two things, and a lot of the people in this room, they don't understand that, because they don't sit in our department head meetings, and they don't, you know, they don't really know how it is that we tease things out. The Bissetts did this as a gift to the city of Newport. We told the Bissetts what we were gonna do with it, and now we're backpedaling on that. And that's my only concern, is that that would upset the family that donated the infrastructure. Now, if you wanted to charge someone with going back to the Bissetts and saying, "Hey, you mind if we go and do this?", I think that might be one thing, to just draw the assumption that, "Well, it's our sign now, it's in our city, and we powered it up. We're gonna do what we want with it." I don't wanna offend anyone that did something super-nice for the city, is what I'm trying to say. Someone gave the city of Newport something nice, let's honor their wishes and go with that. If we didn't wanna honor their wishes, we should've never taken the gift of ignorance. So, I think you're...
Just to respond to that, yes, it's a gift to the community. The whole discussion aspect of the sign actually never even came to this council. That's one of the issues, too. You know, the discussion was only with the manager and the family. It never even came to the, to the city council as far as what it was gonna be used for.
You signed this letter.
But I signed it seeing events in there, and I interpreted it differently than you did.
There's nothing conservatory like the...
No, but I just interpret this section different than you do, and so...
That's a surprise.
No, that's the way... Excuse me. It's not unfortunate. I happened to sign this letter, yes, and I interpreted public, about events, as events. I interpreted it differently than you. So, don't take it out on me as far as that. You've been taking it out on me since this whole thing came up, and so I'm not gonna put up with that anymore as far as that. I just have a difference of opinion and interpretation, and it's unfortunate. It never came to the council as far as the sign goes, as far as what it was gonna be used for. And so, I have Carol, and then Pam, and then I think I'm gonna end the discussion.
Mayor, I think it's just unfortunate that it's come to this, because when Norm and Janet decided to give us so many wonderful gifts for the Centennial, and this was one of them, they wanted to bring this community together. They wanted us to work together. They wanted to improve things for us. They wanted to make it so that everybody could see what was happening in the community. And I'm really, really sad to see this controversy going on right now. And I know it's an issue of time and who can do the job. I do understand that. But there's gotta be a way that we can bring this together, that we can find a solution for this problem. But it's for the community. It's for the whole community. And we need to find a way to work together on this and find a resolution somehow.
And Pam, and then I'm gonna end the discussion.
I do think it's really important what the community is, at least feels that it benefits from this. With respect, the youth explorers don't have a whole lot to do with the community as a whole, nor does "Like Us" on Facebook, or some of the other things that are out. But things like Wednesday's in the waterfront and the shuffle, they are about bringing people downtown to benefit the community. But if we also start to think outside of the traditional box about who's going to do it, why can't a volunteer, a computer-literate volunteer be trained to do it? There are a lot of super whiz kids with computers, a high school kid, a community service person.
On a side note, I have, I, I like that, because youth explorers are our future policemen, and we've had a youth explorer program for as long as I can remember, and...
So, with our office, I'm sorry.
And so, I think that is good to have it on the side, because it's, it's, you know, that I have to disagree with you on this one.
Why exclude downtown?
No, I know.
We're excluded.
No, okay. I will recognize Tom, and then that's it, unless you had something else. Tom Bernier. I'm letting Tom Bernier speak, and then I'm gonna end the discussion.
Wow, okay. No matter where this vote goes, I guess as a department head, and I can speak for myself, if you were gonna tell me that I had to take over that sign, which I want no part of anymore, even though my department built it, I wouldn't have two hours to give you. We're already salary. We put more than forty hours in. I think if you're gonna vote this way, then you need to come up with a way to hire somebody to run the sign. Because that's putting an awful lot on Jesse's shoulders that I don't want. I'm sure she doesn't want it to be.
I would be happy to volunteer two hours a week. I've done many types of work like this before, managed many platforms, and I would be happy to be trained, learn how to do it, and be a trainer for other people.
Anything else? Then, do we have a motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three noes? Do you have a no?
I abstain.
For what reasons?
Well, I believe that both policies have a lot of work that has been done for them. I also believe that both policies have good ideas and bad ideas. And I'm continuing to get ideas from the general public as to what you can do with that sign. Therefore, I would've voted to table this discussion for more in-depth research. There's gonna have to be a, if you wanna have all these different messages put on there, you're gonna have to have a way to triage all those requests. If you wanna do that, have fun. Because you're gonna have to tell somebody yes, and you're gonna have to tell somebody no. And when you tell these people no, you better have a reason why. And that's why I'm still working on looking at some of this. But, you folks have voted, and the outcome is?
The motion bans. Well, that's it. Okay, thank you. Thank you for all the input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You won't have to worry. It won't come up again. It won't come up again, so... Moving on. New business, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I've got a legal agency request from Lago Tractoria. They're taking over, you know, I said, or whatever it is.
Tasting Center.
Yeah, the Tasting Center, yeah. So, I need to have this, they paid the check, they paid the thing, they filled out the application. Just need to have a vote, get it nailed, and cancel the sign.
So, we need a motion? Entain a motion.
They're opening up a restaurant, or they're taking over?
The Tasting Center.
No, they're opening a restaurant for the Tasting Center.
They're opening, right, they're keeping the current Lago, but they're opening up another restaurant in the Tasting Center, where the former Sider House.
They're taking over the Sider House to open a restaurant.
No, I know.
I make it clear.
Would a motion be made? A motion is made, seconded. Any discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
I, I'm distracted and did not hear.
Lago's is taking over the Sider House, and Lago's.
Oh, thank you. That's all I needed to say.
Doesn't it get a new leader? My signature doesn't get a leader?
I can't, all the years.
What? Can't reach a new leader?
On my signature? I was told I'm competing with my brother for signatures. Any other new business? Oh, sorry. I know, we're beating with the air conditioner. Anything? Any new business?
No.
I, I guess mine would be new. We need a motion. I actually, oops, okay, must be trying to thought here. The city council had requested that the attorney negotiate two, two, a settlement agreement with two people who are appealing the property taxes to the state, who they agreed to accept. Spates Family LLC and Duncan Kill Martin on behalf of the property owner. And I've signed the agreement, but the attorney wants a motion made, because the person with the state, I guess, wants to see a motion from the council, even though we agreed to let the attorney negotiate a settlement. He wants a, right? Does that line is correct? He wants a motion?
Right, he'd like the council to ratify.
Ratify the agreements. It's strange. He says the person from the PBR is making indications that he wants, even though we've agreed to let them negotiate a settlement, and we had what we came, what we wanted, he wants a motion from the council to ratify the agreements.
I'll be happy to make that motion if you can find the proper wording.
Just make a motion, I guess, to ratify the agreements with, the settlement agreements with Spates Family LLC and Duncan?
Two Condon.
The two Condon properties.
There's a total of four.
Four.
That you guys discussed. You had a range. The end result is within the range that you have prescribed. So, the attorney would like a motion to ratify the mayor's signature.
So, we need a motion for that. Does that, would it be a motion? Is there a second? Made seconded. Discussion, basically, for the, you can't hear me?
I can hear the name of the, the people that Duncan is representing.
Condon Property. It was what?
D O N, D O N.
You actually...
Yeah, there's another one, too.
Yeah, there's two properties. One is Duncan Kill Martin and Gene Condon. You have a trust. The other one is Gene Condon Trust.
Right.
And then, there's two particular Spates properties.
Yes.
And the addresses are listed right on the front.
And basically...
Short Street.
Short Street, and, right. But basically, we, the attorney negotiated a settlement versus going through the whole hearing process with the state, which actually was less expensive to try to reach a settlement than to have the attorney try to negotiate with the state and back and forth. And we had set an amount for the attorney that came within that amount, and they were happy that we had a paper too. So, motion is made, seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. He can have this whole packet. He can have that whole packet, I don't need it.
Just actually, I need your blue paper. Take out your blue paper, keep going. You see the click, the black click? Keep going.
Oh.
You can give that to Jim.
That one probably is simpler. But you can have them both.
Those are all the same.
What? You don't want them? Okay. That's all I have on the new business. Any new business? New business? Anything new? Okay. Old business, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chavino?
Sort of. I would just like to remind all of us to really pay attention to the language that we use. For example, a memo is not a policy. When we were talking about two conflicting policies earlier, we were, it was one policy and one memo that was written by the city manager that none of us had weighed in on. So, when you called it a policy, I felt that it gave a false representation of what we were actually discussing. So, just trying to be sure that we use the most accurate language that we can. And then, secondly, I'd also like to remind everyone the importance of being polite and respectful. And some of the behavior I, or the words I've heard tonight are really disappointing. And I wish we could just be more civil and more community-minded, all of us.
Anything else? I have no old business, old business. Old business. Any old business? Okay. Next council meeting will be Monday, September 10th, three weeks from now versus two weeks to the Labor Day at 6:30 PM, together in the council room. We need a motion to adjourn at 8:30. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.